Well, I guess it gets going, so thank you for that. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Pastor Mike Hall of Keystone Powerhouse Ministries. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we humbly come before you, seeking your guidance and direction in this council meeting tonight. We remember the words of Paul in your Holy Word where he said, "I exhort therefore that, first of all, supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and for all that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty; for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior, who will have all men to be saved and to come unto the knowledge of the truth." Now we pray that the God of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of glory, may give unto them the Spirit and wisdom and revelation in the knowledge of him, in the eyes of their understanding being enlightened, that they may know what is the hope of his calling and what the riches of glory of his inheritance in the saints, what is the exceeding greatness of his power to usward who believe according to the working of his mighty power, which he wrought in Christ when he raised him from the dead and set him at his own right hand in heavenly places, far above all principality and power and might and dominion, every name that is named not only in this world but also that which is to come and hath put all things under his feet. We beseech them that they walk worthy of the vocation wherewith they are called, with all loneliness and meekness and longsuffering, forbearing one another in love, endeavoring to keep the unity of the Spirit in the bond of peace. In this I pray that their love may abound more and more in knowledge and in judgment, and that they may approve all things that are excellent, and that they may be sincere without offense until the day of Christ. We ask these things in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember McCandless.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Councilmember Vaught.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
A point of personal privilege, I'd like to just welcome, we have a scout with us tonight, Ben from Troop 201. Ben will ask you to stand, and he's here working on his citizenship in the community merit badge, so glad to have you here, Ben. Thank you.
And members of the council and the members of the body, if I can take a moment of personal privilege to recognize the life of Lyle Weeks. Lyle passed away on January 11th, 2025, at the age of 85. Mr. Weeks was born in 1939. He graduated from William Crispin High School, and he cultivated a lifelong passion for Lyle pursued higher education, earning a Bachelor's of Arts in Sociology from Carlton College in 1961 and a Master's Degree of Higher Education from the University of Missouri, Kansas City. Lyle dedicated his life to betterment of this community, serving in key roles at the University of Kansas, excuse me, the University of Missouri, Kansas City, and Longview Community College, before joining our family, before joining the family business Weeks Apartments as a managing partner. Lyle was a steadfast advocate for his hometown, serving as a City Council member for the City of Independence from 1988 to 1992, which he led initiatives to strengthen civic engagement and foster a vibrant community. Lyle's legacy includes founding the IMPACT programs, such as the Lead Training Program for the Independence Chamber of Commerce, the Independence Youth Friends Membership, excuse me, Mentorship Program, and his leadership of the Task Force that established Hope House, which continues to serve as a beacon of hope and support for individuals afflicted by domestic violence. In retirement, Lyle exemplified selfless service by volunteering as a driver for Meals on Wheels, delivering meals with distinction three or more days a week, and continuing the advocacy of Hope House to bring awareness to that critical issue. So therefore, now it be resolved that the City of Independence, by this proclamation, honor and commemorate the extraordinary life of Lyle Weeks, and express the deepest condolences to his family and friends, and extends our heartfelt gratitude for his decades of service to our community. Thank you. Also, if I could take a moment to, take a moment of personal privilege also for the snow crews, talk about a tough job. Twenty-four hours a day, days on time, and I know there were folks that, you know, felt that it could have been better, but we've got so many resources at the time, but they worked diligently to do that, and if I could ask you, Mr. City Manager, if you have anything else to add, because I know you worked with them diligently, you got the phone calls, your crews, everybody got the phone calls, so give us a perspective from your perspective. I know they did a great job and they worked really, really hard in the challenges that they faced.
Yes, Mayor, thank you for that opportunity. Our crews did work for several days in a row, 12-hour shifts, which meant folks had pretty quick turnaround when they went home, grabbed a shower, some food, and a quick rest before they were back in a truck for another 12-hour shift. From a city manager's perspective, the thing I was especially proud of this snow event was the interdepartmental coordination, the fire department, the police department, our dispatchers, emergency services dispatchers, our IPL linemen, our water department crews that were repairing broken water mains in sub-freezing temperatures, everybody working hand in hand, complementing one another, great communication, letting each other know of issues, really demonstrated not just the leadership at the city, but the respect that our employees have for one another in service to the community.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that. Also, could I entertain a motion to move the I-Star Award and proclamations out of order? So moved. We've got a motion, we've got a motion in a second. I'll just do a roll call. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. So we've got an I-Star Award, pardon me, and this is for Nicholas Alexander. So Nicholas, you're being recognized tonight for the I-Star Award, and we've got some recommendations from your supervisor, Chris Johnson. And Chris said, I love how he started this first sentence. He said, "Nicholas came to the City of Independence straight out of college with nothing but his degree, an SUV full of his personal effects, and eyes filled with determination." You know, Chris might have a future in writing. I mean, I just love the way how that started. He began his career by shadowing our systems administrators, absorbing information on how our technology impacts the city, and on a daily basis going onsite to meet and engage with personnel, he would be helping to protect the city's cybersecurity system. And as we all know, up here from the dais, how important that is, that is a really critical role, so thank you for doing that. He did this eagerly with a friendly demeanor and professional behavior. He has been with the city for two years now and has taken on multiple responsibilities, always shining brightly, and shining is what being any star is, but especially now an I-Star recipient. Specific examples of what you've done. Nicholas has been instrumental in the use of the eDiscovery System, assisting the city legal department by pulling terabytes of data related to queries, questions, and cases that Independence has been involved with, so thank you for that. He is responsible for curating the cybersecurity training for the City of Independence. I know all of us here have been members of his reminder emails, do your training, so thank you for that. And he's always looking ways to mitigate those risks that could in fact affect the city in this ever-changing war of information. Similarly, he has been paramount in laying the groundwork for our city's password management system. I do recognize you for the I-Star, there are times I curse that, but I also recognize the importance of that. Don't you all agree? Yep, it is very important, so keep it up, and we're not going to change a thing in that regard. But there are times when I go, oh, I didn't type it in right, because they got to be long. Anyway, was that too much information, Mr. City Manager, with cybersecurity?
Mayor, I will never correct you in public.
I just wanted to give our colleagues that, or our adversaries that might in fact getting, trying to get in there, the passwords are long. So anyway, and the systems that you manage are critical to the safety of our city, so I just want to bestow this I-Star Award to you, and also you've got a couple of tickets for a Mavericks game, so with that, please come forward, and the City Manager also has the I-Star for you. for the I-Star Award.
I'll move to approve item 25700.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
And item 2570, recognizing our I-Star recipient is in fact passed. Very, very good. That moves us to our citizens' requests, and here we go. Okay. And if I can have a motion to allow non-residents to speak this evening, I would be grateful.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So we've got a motion and a second to waive the rules for non-residents to speak. Any comments before we vote? And I will also do this by acclamation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That brings Brian Franklin, and Brian, if you can come forward and, okay, and Brian's going to need some assistance, so that is perfectly okay. Brian, face this way so we can, that way you can speak right into the microphone.
This way?
Yes, sir, and then move over just a second. That, that's perfect.
I want the feedback on me.
Oh, no, no, go ahead and lean into it so people at home can hear. But you'll have five minutes and proceed when you're ready to start.
Use a, probably transit, now I can't write in the Kansas City anymore. Because, I don't know, they cut the funding, Independence did. Hurts me, hurts me and my friends, because they gotta pay money for Uber or Lyft. Costs too much money, you gotta wait for hours. I might have a volunteer job this month, so I want to be sure to get there without having to pay $16 or 50. They make, they have priority now to change it. Can't afford to spend 30 bucks a week or however much to go to work. And we need to get fixed now, not tomorrow or next year, now.
Next up is Gary Calvert. Gary, come on up, and you have five minutes.
Mayor, can I approach with, with these flyers?
If you can give them to Jeremy Coover, and he can pass those out while you go ahead and speak, if you could.
Okay. Council, I, I own a business called Calvert's Express. We operated in Independence since 2005. We're going on 20 years. What I'm hoping that the city will do is, you guys have a, the city has a ordinance that you can't have advertisement balloons outside of a building. We put our advertisement balloon, it's, we have, we fly new advertisement balloons, and we have, we have, like I said, it's a new balloon, and what I'm looking to do is, it sits on top of my building, I own the building, and so if there's any damage to a building, it would be my building, and we do a pretty good job of maintaining it, and I was hoping that the city would pass a ordinance to some sort of a conditional, a conditional permit approval. I'm not opposed, I'm more than happy to pay a permit, a permit fee to do this. And I was just hoping to get some feedback, if we could get something passed on that, so I could, we have a lot of drive-by traffic, and I'd like to benefit off of that advertisement. And again, I appreciate you guys' time and service, though, and I would hope you guys could help me on it.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this time, I appreciate the council listening to us. I spoke before, about a month back, but here to speak, and it's really way too much to really get into in five minutes to talk about.
If I can, I just give you a correction, because I spoke before, so you get.
No, I spoke at another council, at another time. It's, whether it's three minutes or five, that's fine. I, I can't, that's fine. We're speaking about the Ready Rental Program, and we've met with Tom and everything, and trying to beat this up, we're obviously, we're going down the same path, we want to get rid of the chronic bad landlords and everything and work together. But I really feel that this time, we really need to get everybody at the table, not just one side or the other. I know I've talked to Tom and met with him, and looking at the language that's being proposed and everything, I really would like to see an extension on this. Things that's happening in this is going to cost Independence a lot more. There's some language in there that is, that they've proposed in other cities that they can't get through, and the reason why is because there's some things that is, require warrants to get access to property and everything, and I, I think I shared an instance with Tom, no matter as good landlords as we want to be, and having bad tenants or whatever in situations, we try to help them out. And the City of Independence, in one instance, I'll just give a scenario, that codes violations that the tenant was having, was trying to work with the tenant and trying to clean the code violations up. The tenant, when I went over to take care of the outside issues that they had caused, the tenant was, had all the rights, they were able to throw me off the property because they have the rights, and I was trespassing on their property because I conveyed the property to them, which brought us into codes, brought us into court, had to pay court costs, even though he was fined and everything from that point. The tenants have a lot more rights, and when you look at the, some of the ordinances that you're trying to pass and the language, I think we need a little bit more time to come to the table. That way, it benefits both sides, and that way, we get the bad actors taken care of, but we can also work together. So I'm asking for time that we meet together and get some of the language worked out. I do appreciate your time.
Hope I pronounced this correctly. Ms. White, you'll have five minutes, please.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Dashae White. I'm a renter, a business owner, a mother, and a leader in the Independence Towers Tenant Union, and a member of the Eastern Jackson County Tenant Union. I am here tonight to advocate for the necessary changes and amendments to the current rental-ready program. Forty-one percent of Independence residents are tenants, that's close to 50,000 people. Far too many of us have had to deal with the consequences of unchecked landlords in our city. Independence Towers was my second experience living in an apartment building, and I'm traumatized behind living there. Over the past five years, I'll say three, I've been forced to live with cockroaches, loss of hot water, loss of heat, loss of air conditioning, holes in the wall, mildew on the ceilings, landlord retaliation. I'm afraid to rent another apartment at this point. I didn't know landlords were allowed to get away with treating tenants the way I've been treated at Independence Towers apartments. It even seemed like they had the permission of the city to me, without the experience that I have now. But because of my experience at Independence Towers, I think it's important that the city council and the community at large understand that the tenant's experience matters too. Those of us who are closest to the problem are closest to the solution. And this is why I'm here, to ask you to vote in favor of tonight's ordinances updating our city's rental-ready program. Our union also looks forward to working with you directly moving forward on any additional policies that will benefit tenants like me in our community. Thank you, council members, for your time and your consideration for the community.
Thank you. Next up is Chris Carlton. And Chris, you'll have five minutes, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Chris Carlton. I am a resident of Independence Towers, but today I come to you as the leader of the Eastern Jackson County Tenant Union. We are here to support Independent City Council in passing the updated rental-ready ordinance with the changes, and changes to the landlord-tenant code, as well as to show appreciation for commitments from Councilwoman Heather Wiley and Assistant City Manager Charles DeSalle to work with our union moving forward for the proposed Phase Two. For me, supporting improvements to rental-ready is the next logical step to ensure safe, secure housing for myself and other residents within the City of Independence. At Independence Towers, I have dealt with faulty plumbing, loss of heating and AC, and horrific bug infestations, yet the building received the pass from inspectors in 2023. This is proof that action needs to be taken now to address the faults in the current implementation of the rental-ready program, so that no one else in the city has to accept these conditions. Though we have been frustrated with some aspects of the process and the lack of acknowledgement on how our actions at Independence Towers brought many of the issues addressed in the updated ordinance to light, we cannot let the perfect be the enemy of the good and push back much-needed changes to the program. So again, I ask city for the city council to pass rental-ready updates tonight and use the Plan Phase Two to work with us to addressing any additional changes to the current proposal that may be needed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Ben Neal. And Ben, you'll also have five minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Ben Neal. I am a proud leader with the Eastern Jackson County Tenant Union. I grew up in Independence. I graduated from William Crispin, class of 2002. I live and work in Independence today, as I have for most of my life. I have watched the rents in my community go up and the conditions of the buildings deteriorate for many, many years. I'm a homeowner today, but I've been a renter and a tenant for most of my life. I have family and friends and neighbors that are tenants, and I support the reforms to the rental-ready program and the landlord-tenant code as an important and needed step towards assuring that all tenants have a safe place to call home. I also recognize that this is just the first step, and there remains much work to be done. And I appreciate Councilmember Wiley and Assistant City Manager Dessel for meeting with the Tenant Union and committing to working with us moving forward. It is essential that tenants have a voice and a seat at the table, because tenants know better than anyone exactly what is wrong with the current inspection process. The tenants of Independence Towers, which passed inspection in 2023 despite multiple blatant code violations, they know better than anyone. And our union is committed to be actively engaged in the next phase of reforms, so the policies remain centered on tenants' needs, that they are routinely enforced, and that they avoid potential conflicts of interest. I also recognize that these reforms would have never happened if it wasn't for KC tenants, the Eastern Jackson County Tenant Union, and the Independence Towers Tenant Union, because it is our organizing that has brought these issues into the light and exposed the glaring issues with the rental inspection policy and enforcement process. And we will continue to organize for tenants' rights, for safe and affordable housing, and for meaningful reforms to our housing system. And in closing, I just once again ask the council tonight to vote in support of the ordinance updating the rental-ready program, because there are urgent needs that need addressing right now, and I thank you for your commitment to work with our union on further improvements moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mark, is it Yanda? And Mark, you have three minutes.
Great. Hey, guys. Mayor, city council, community, thanks for coming. So, you know, when I first came down here a few months back, you know, we were, we were kind of looking at this thing as whole, and I've, I've talked to our neighbors, and I've talked to our community members here, and I've talked to our leadership here, and we agree with you guys totally. But one of the things I don't agree with is, we, we're being held accountable for something, some disaster that some landlord at that independent tower started, and the language that we have to go by from here on out, it's questionable. And the language that we have to go by from here on out, it's questionable for us. And it's questionable whether we would want to invest into Independence as a business as well because of the way this language reads. Most of it's pretty clean. And I agree with about 80% of it, honestly. But I don't agree with the way that you guys have written the inspections, the way that the inspections looked at. And I've been told by my community, by my neighbors and friends and council that if we have a problem, we'll work through it, and I appreciate that, I'm sure we will. But it doesn't read that way. So if it doesn't read that way and down the road we need it changed, how do we modify it when we have new leadership in the city? How does that change? For example, I personally would be willing to look at investment of that independent tower, but the way this language reads is that I really can't fix it up. That means that I have to evict all you guys to fix it. Yeah, that's how that reads. And I could see myself helping the community out, and I think, you know, like, I'm not sure if I'd invest in this community tower specifically, but that's what that language says. You know, read that really closely. We all do. And this universal language is, again, I challenge, and I'd like to ask for an extension as well.
You have one minute, sir.
One minute?
One minute.
Great. When I was in the airborne, the very first thing, or the second thing we did before we hit the door is the jump master would yell, "One minute!" And we'd hit the door. So anyway, I am a concerned citizen. I'm glad that you guys agree with the amendments. I agree with most of them, but those inspection ones I have a question about, and I'd like to see that language change. And outside of that, I want to thank the city of Independence. I want to thank the leadership of Independence. I want to thank our community for supporting this. And again, it's Mark Yanda. Hope you guys have a great day. Thanks for attending this meeting.
Thank you. And that brings us to the conclusions of citizens' comments. That'll bring us to our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I move to, move for approval for the city manager reports and recommendations.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Anyone want to pull any items for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Item number one on Resolutions 25-705.
Thank you. So number one, 25-705. Anyone else want to pull any of the other items on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Item one on the consent agenda?
That's the change order, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to pull anything else for separate consideration? Okay, seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for the consent agenda, and then we'll consider those two items separately.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda is passed with the two items that were not on there for separate consideration, but the rest of the items did pass. So Councilmember Fears, we'll come to you. Item number one, 25-705. Please proceed.
I move to approve item 25-705.
We've got a motion to approve. We've got a second. Thank you very much, and please proceed.
And actually, I should have probably done this slightly different. I'd like to move to postpone this until February 4th. The Independence Economic Development Partnership meets tomorrow morning, and I'd like them to have an opportunity to just hear about this before we vote on it as council.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, since the Independence Chamber and Commerce is involved in this, do you know of any reason that this would affect anything they've did or need to do of this?
Currently, we are paying on a month-to-month basis for our Economic Development Services contract with the chamber. Certain that getting a permanent solution in place is ideal, but Councilmember Fears and I did have a chance to speak with the board chair prior to the meeting, made them aware of that, and they were fully supportive of continuing this for two weeks to the February 4th meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, we've got a motion to postpone it till February the 4th. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for postponing this till February 4th.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And it is moved seven in favor, zero opposed, to postpone this to February the 4th. Councilmember McCandless, item number one, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask my questions first and then make a motion.
That'll be perfectly good.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, couple of questions on this. So this is a utilities payment kiosk, correct?
That's correct.
And your hope is that people will come to the kiosk and bring their electronic payment in the form of a debit card or a credit card and make their payment for their utilities? Is that what I understand that this kiosk is set up for?
Somewhat. With the move of Independence Utilities to the building that we're calling Municipal Commons on Jackson Drive, we recognize that that will further displace the ability for in-person payment for, for some individuals that have been used to going to the current site of the IUC. So putting two of these kiosks on-site there will allow people who've been used to going to that site to continue to come there and, and make payments if that's how they prefer to handle their bill. Also, the new Municipal Commons building is, does not have the same feature that the current Utility Center building does with the drive-through mechanism. So individuals who may want to pay a bill, but it's after hours or on a weekend or a government holiday, this will give them the ability to walk up to the kiosk and make that payment that they are used to being able to do off-hours right now through the drive-through, maybe not as convenient, but still afford the ability to make after-hours payments for individuals who, who prefer to do that.
So there's a place for them to put a check in? Because I know a number of the people who come and pay in person like to do so with a non-electronic version of payment.
I, I would liken this probably most familiar to all of us, like an ATM. So the ability to make deposits with cash or check or card.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And can you tell me why the cost went up so considerably?
I will have to ask our deputy city manager to come help with the pricing question.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Lisa Reynolds. The price went up because we initially ordered one kiosk. It was in the $30,000 range. It's in the packet. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head. We got it, it's an indoor kiosks, and it was to be tested and make sure everything's up and running. When that checked out, we went ahead and pursued the order for two outside kiosks. The outdoor kiosks are a little more costly, and then, of course, there are two of them instead of the one original. So that's what tipped it over the $100,000 mark.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, I move approval of item number one.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for approval of item number one. Any further discussion on item number one? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item number one passed, a seven in favor, zero opposed. So that brings us to the regular agenda. We've got a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, and this is a full public hearing. So Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the formation of the Blue Ridge Crossing East Community Improvement District. This hearing was continued from January 6th, 2025. Full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tom Skinnell. I'm the Community Development Director. The property owners within the Blue Ridge area are seeking the formation of this Community Improvement District. This, this, the boundary of this district essentially covers the Burlington Coat Factory, Pier 88 Seafood, Starbucks, and the McDonald's restaurant there, located along 40, 40 Highway south of I-70. The CID petition is seeking a one-cent sales tax to fund some exterior improvements to the properties, as well as to provide services within the district boundaries. Those services would include public safety, snow removal, landscaping, and other maintenance of that property. This is a 20-year CID, so this district will end after 20 years. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Now, this will open the public hearing up, so anyone can come forward and talk on this issue if they like. I'll call it three times because that's the way the rules are set. So does anyone want to come forward to speak in favor of, in opposition, or for informational purposes only? And please say your name and...
My name is Becky Haig, and I am here tonight to talk on SIDS. The SIDS be particular. SIDS stands for Community Improvement District. When I think of a community improvement district, I think of improvements such as security, marketing, to bring businesses in to fill up vacancies in the, in the strip mall or whatever, and maybe do special events to promote the city and their businesses. Tonight, there's another SIDS on the, on the agenda, and it's the Blue Ridge East Crossing. This affects the, like we said, you said already, the McDonald's and Starbucks and ask them for the 1% sales, additional sales tax. Looking at the budget, they're expecting to bring in $190,000 per year, and the only really upgrade I see is the lighting upgrade to LED for the cost of $10,000. There's some security expense for $55,000, but it doesn't say whether it's new, current, or additional. The rest of it is maintenance. It's snow removal. It's trash removal. It's trash cans. It's landscaping, mowing, same things we have to pay for at our homes. But we don't get, we don't get a tax break. We don't get money to, to do it for ourselves. You can always say you won't shop at a SIDS. You won't shop at these stores because you don't want to pay the 1%. There are 17 SIDS in Independence, which is more than Lee Summitt or Leewood, Kansas. Most of them do charge an additional 1% sales tax to the consumer. It's hard to make any purchases in Independence without paying a 1%. I know 1% doesn't sound like a lot, but when you add up family, your family groceries, coffee here and there, fast food once in a while, and things your family needs, in a year, it can easily add up to $200 or more. In Independence, commercial landlords, like all businesses, just like the residential landlords, need to have a business license in the city. What I have found per the city website is that very few of these commercial landlords have business licenses, and some businesses do not have a current business license as well. The property owners of these SIDS are the ones that must agree to the form. And you can see that from the budget, they're the ones that benefit. They're the ones that are responsible for these properties that we're maintaining with SIDS money. I know this is a small SIDS area, but there are other small SIDS around town that seem to be benefiting also. Have Drive, one owner, didn't find a license. Nolan South, one owner, is Harbor Freight area, as well as the Honey Baked Ham strip mall. One owner, couldn't find a license. Marketplace Shopping Center, Price Chopper, and all the stores around them. Looks like another one owner, no business license. Nolan Fashion Square, one owner, no license. Now, this must have to be the worst SIDS in Independence. Except for the few buildings that are still in business, most of them are boarded up. How is that tax money that we're paying to the few businesses that are open helping our city? I don't see that as a community development issue, boarded up buildings that we talk about a lot. If you shop around at Pro Bass, around Independence Center, 39th Street, Inglewood, Fairmount, Independence Square, Nolan Road, you're all paying a SIDS tax every time you buy, buy something. It really seems more like a convenient tax for Independence residents who pay just not to have to drive far away to get what you need. These SIDS bring in over $10 million annually to benefit the property owners, and they're not paying hundreds of thousands of dollars a year for the city licenses. Something is not right here. Next time you ask why we don't have money for this or that or street or picks up your par, I think this is part of our problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor or opposition to, or informational purposes only? Please proceed, and please state your name.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Dan Horn with IAS Partners. We're the owner of the Blue Ridge Crossing Shopping Center. And I just wanted to kind of give a little more context as to why we're asking for a Community Improvement District. I'm going to hopefully address some of your questions as well. So our company actually tore down the old Blue Ridge Mall back in the day and did the redevelopment into the Blue Ridge Crossing Shopping Center. And some of you probably know this, but the line between Kansas City, Missouri, and Independence runs directly through the shopping center. So Walmart, Lowe's, the, the kind of the strip of shops to the, to the west, that's Kansas City, Missouri. And then Independence is Starbucks, McDonald's, Burlington, and then the strip where Wingstop and a few other businesses are. So our company owns and manages all of that. And over the last few years, we've seen a pretty significant uptick in property crimes, car break-ins, things like that. And the feedback we've been receiving from people that, that work at the, the businesses that are tenants of the center is that it's, it's getting harder and harder to find people to staff those positions because a lot of them are a little bit maybe afraid to come to work or, you know, just not all that comfortable in the center. And, you know, to us, we've invested a lot of time and effort and money over the last 20 years or so to, to really try to keep that center a vibrant place for people to come and, you know, get essential services and things like groceries and go to Lowe's and, you know, businesses that are really important, both on the Kansas City, Missouri side and the Independence side to this part of town. So it's something we care deeply about, and the, the vast majority of what we're trying to do here is to bolster our security efforts. So we already spend over $100,000 a year to hire private security. Currently, they're, they're there eight hours per day, and it's just not enough. So what the CID will do is provide additional funds for us to bolster that with a 24/7 dispatch service where any tenant can call if they see something, or any customer of any business will have signs all over the place so they can call and, and, you know, we'll dispatch security out there as, as soon as possible. And another thing I wanted to point out, too, so this will be a cooperative CID with Kansas City, Missouri. So we're simultaneously working on a CID for the Kansas City, Missouri side. And so with that, the revenue from Lowe's and some of the other businesses really increases the budget that we have, where we think we can make a meaningful impact specifically on the security side of things. So that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish here, certainly not a money grab or anything like that. We just want to preserve that, the asset, preserve it, and make sure it remains a, a shopping center that people feel safe to come to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or for informational purposes only? Anyone else want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or for informational purposes only?
I'd just like to ask, again...
And please state your name again, and...
Hi, I'm Brian Winberry, and I was just listening to this. Obviously, I wasn't really informed on this side, but what I hear is a lot of businesses in Independence doesn't have a license. And going back, not to drag the Ready Rental into this, but there's some things that's inside the Ready Rental where you have to have a license, otherwise you don't get utilities. I would ask the question, why in the world does our licensing, our, our businesses have, get utilities if you're holding the hostage of your landlords? And I would also go back and just ask, what's the rush on Ready Rental?
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or informational purposes only? With that being said, we will close the public hearing, and...
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Before Mr. Skinnell gets away, as he's trying to, could you please, since you are the one who can speak to business license, could you please address that issue?
Yes, all of the...
Yes, all of the businesses that are out there are licensed, and the property owners, the property managers, they are licensed. We had staff check this two weeks ago. All of those were in compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. Skinnell. Mr. City Manager, do you mind if I, thank you. Since we are talking about CIDs, and there are some around our community, and I've helped form several myself, in my tenure so far on the city council, for the impact that they do provide with the fiscal responsibilities that they also have put upon them, can you just real quick, briefly explain what a community improvement district is, and how they're formed, just so people don't think they blossom up automatically, there's no structure to them?
So, a community improvement district is formed in accordance with state statute, and it must pass two tests. Those two tests are, you have to have 50% of the property owners agree to form the community improvement district, and the property owners of more than 50% of the property that is going to be within this CID must also agree to form that petition. Most of the community improvement districts that we see, generally, they impose additional sales tax. Those are used either to make improvements to the property, or in some cases, much like this, where they're focusing more on community aspects. The safety, the trash removal, and the challenges that some of the businesses are facing. So, that's kind of the high level of what a CID is and how it's formed.
Also, with given state statute, there have to be publicly noticed meetings. Those meetings can be open to the public. They're just like a governing body. If they have personnel matters or different discussion matters, they can go into closed session.
That is correct. Once a CID is formed, it is a separate entity, and it is a board, ranges anywhere from what I've seen, five, seven members that are on that board, and it functions much like a separate entity, where they have open and public meetings, where they are noticed. They also have to provide to the city their annual budgets, and they are subject to audits by the state of Missouri as well, to make sure that the CIDs that are formed are doing what they're set out to do.
Well, thank you for laying that good foundation for us.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
How do our, the amount of CIDs that we have compared to other jurisdictions, like Lee Summit or Blue Springs, do you know, by any chance?
I haven't looked into that. We are a slightly different community than Lee Summit. We have a more mature commercial shopping centers, which over time need extra care to make sure that they don't become blighting influences that they may. So, trying to compare us to Lee Summit or Blue Springs is like comparing apples and oranges.
I was just kind of curious, because I know that the shopping center in Blue Springs, they're at the Walmart and the Home Depot, I think it's, I'm not sure, it's at Lowe's or Home Depot. I believe they have one, because I've actually seen their little signs on the register stating you're in a, and tells you you have to pay a tax. So, that's required, that they actually posted on the registers or somewhere in the building that they're in a, is that required?
I'm not sure regarding that requirement.
Okay. One more question. Mr. City Manager, we actually spoke privately a couple of weeks ago about one of these businesses in the district that did not have a license. According to Mr. Skinnell, they do, so that was rectified?
I believe that has now been rectified through efforts of city staff. There was a change in ownership with one of the businesses, and staff was following up with that business owner, and appears we've now satisfied that.
Okay, all right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, pretend, thank you.
Yes.
So, sometimes it's hard to compare CIDs, because you could incorporate an entire area as a CID, as the one in Blue Springs did. It has probably more than 50 shops in it, and it was counted as one CID. This is going to have four businesses in it and count as one CID, so we have to be a little bit careful about comparing those. I would, could you just speak to the Nolan Road CID, because it's probably one that people would be the most familiar with, and understand what it is that they have done with some of their funds over the years?
Sure. So, the Nolan Road CID was formed about 10 years ago, I think, and it stretches essentially from Truman Road on the north, all the way down to 40 Highway. It encompasses close to 200 different property owners, and encompasses the property that front along Nolan Road. As I mentioned, it was formed about 10 years ago, collects a 1-cent CID. They have used their funds to provide landscape enhancements up and down Nolan Road. They have replaced the street signs at their cost, at the intersections along Nolan Road. They have added banners to light poles. They have removed pole signs in certain parts along the district, and replaced them with monument signs. They have cleaned up excess vegetation along different intersections that the city couldn't get to, or MoDOT could not get to, at their cost. Those are just some of the things that they have done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I apologize if this is redundant, but I just wanted to make sure, for the community's benefit, that this is understood. A community improvement district is self-imposed by the businesses in that district. This is not something that the city council is deciding to levy a tax on. But for state statute, this conversation would not even be in your council chambers. But because municipalities are the only entity with the power to levy and collect sales tax, then we have to be a part of that decision-making process. But the businesses in this district have signed a petition. The majority of them have, at least the majority of them, have decided they want to do this. They've held an election. The majority of them are going to decide if they want to do this. This is self-governance 101. This is, again, not the council making this determination. So, because the way statute's written, they have to come and petition you to grant that final approval, but all of that decision-making about whether or not to impose it is a decision being made by the businesses within the district.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussions on this item? Okay, seen none. This brings us to ordinances, 25-001. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-001, second reading, and ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a municipal agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the US 24 Highway Phase III Project from Wilson Road to Sterling Avenue, as part of the US 24 Highway Phase III Project, project number 112212/federal project number JKU0226, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, just, I know we've talked about this project now multiple times, but I think it helps to remind our community about the cooperative nature of this project. If you could just speak to that?
Yes, so the federal government, through what's known as the Surface Transportation Program, allocates funding to urban regions based on population. So, a certain allocation was made to the Kansas City region, both sides of the state line, and the municipalities compete for those funds to help make a variety of transportation improvements. The 24 Highway Complete Streets Project was one that our city staff submitted on many years ago, and proud to say that it ranked at or near the top of the list of projects in the region, because of the safety enhancements to pedestrians, to motorists, the beautification it's bringing to the area, checked a lot of boxes that these projects are scored on. This benefit from this is not just the safety and aesthetic enhancements, though, it's the financial benefit to the city. So, these projects are largely funded with the federal funds that I just mentioned. Oftentimes, they do require some cost-share mechanism. This is a three-phase project, so each of those kind of had a few different rules about what the percentage of the cost share was, but in no circumstances, the city paying more than 50% of the cost for this project. So, we're getting all of these enhancements, all of these improvements, to our community. A major corridor, or one of just a handful of presidential libraries in the country is located, and being paid for, by and large, with federal funds, and thereby preserving our local tax dollars to invest further in our infrastructure in the community.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else have other further discussions? Seen none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 25-001.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And 25-001 passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to 25-003. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-003, second reading, and ordinance repealing ordinance number 19521 regarding surplus property, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, can you give some background on this, why we're asking to repeal this ordinance, and what the plan is going forward?
Yeah, thank you, and this has certainly been a process that has evolved and stretched over much of the last year and beyond. So, a little over a year ago, my office had conversations with leadership in the Independence School District about their interest in utilizing Chrisler Stadium for Van Horn High School baseball program. Chrisler Stadium, of course, being a beloved asset, but it has kind of slowed down in use over the years, for a variety of reasons, not the least of which, it's been difficult to make the ongoing capital maintenance investments needed to make that ballpark competitive with modern-day athletic facilities around the region. As we had these conversations with the district, they showed strong interest in acquiring that property, so that they could make even more robust investments and enhancements to the property. And, you know, think about this on the night when we're talking about rental ready. As a tenant, you would probably be hard-pressed to make major capital investments into a property that you don't own. So, the school district was interested in acquiring that property, so they could make those investments. Originally, we went down the road, and the council passed a year ago, an ordinance that was going to declare the property as surplus. And under that property, the city would have been required to take bids, and make an evaluation of which bid essentially was the highest, or the one deemed to be the most financially lucrative, if you will. We felt like it was in the city's best interest to ensure that that property still was used in a very defined way. And if it sold to somebody who didn't plan to use it in the way the city envisioned, well, then that would have been something we didn't have a say over. So, by repealing this ordinance, that terminates the surplus property declaration that was made a year ago, and it sets us up for, here at an upcoming council meeting, to bring a development agreement forward for your consideration. That development agreement will spell out certain terms and conditions, improvements that the city expects to be made, use of the facility. One of the important lessons that the city has, I would say, learned, particularly with the past sale of the old water department building and the old health department building, is inserting what we call a reverter clause into that development agreement, that if the school district were to try to sell that property, the city would have, that property would revert back to the city. So, we ensure that it continues to be used in the fashion that we envision it, that it's programmed, active, invested in. And largely, I'll end by saying this, we see several of the council's goals being addressed with this outcome. Economic revitalization, property that's on a prominent corner in the community, not getting the kind of use that we want to see anymore. If there's more activity throughout the year, that's going to help support the businesses that are there, and presumably, business growth and vacant buildings around there. We also see this as black removal. The school district being able to make those capital investments, both to the interior and exterior of the building, will bring beautification to that prominent corner, and help revitalize that aesthetically as well. So, in summary, this is repealing the surplus property declaration in lieu of what we plan to bring forward to you, which is a development agreement that outlines terms and conditions between Independence School District and the city.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have other further discussion? Seen none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 25-003.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 25-003 passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. Brings us to 25-004. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-004, second reading, and ordinance amending Chapter 5, Article 11 Landlord-Tentant Code and Article 15 Rental Ready of the City Code, second reading.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
That was pretty close, but I'm going to give the nod to Councilmember Stewart, but you will, in fact, be next in line. I won't let anybody jump there. So, Councilmember, please proceed.
All right, so, the one, I think overall, I think that this is a pretty good ordinance, although I did see one thing that I really would like to see changed. In here, the original ordinance stated that the inspector had to, was responsible for keeping the inspection forms, and then we could request them, basically, from them. I think that the inspectors actually need to provide those inspections to the city, and then the city keep them, for a variety of reasons, just to make sure that we have them, so in case somebody sunshine requests them, or, you know, we just don't want them getting lost. So, I'm going to make a motion to amend Section 4.15.006. It's labeled rental dwelling unit inspection required. Basically, I'm going to ask that we strike all the current language, and that the language that will be inserted is, it'll be, "Section A, a valid rental unit inspection form shall be submitted to the city in the form and manner prescribed by the city for all rental units." And it'll be a "Section 1, the qualified rental housing inspector shall submit all inspection records to the city upon completion of the rental inspection and payment by the property owner. The city shall retain all the records in accordance with Missouri Sunshine Law and the local government records retention schedule." Anyway, that's my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second for the amendment?
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify one thing on that?
Please.
With that...
Actually, as Robert's rules would say, we, in order to go forward, have got to get the second before it's open for debate.
I see.
Okay, thank you. Now, please proceed.
To inquire of the city manager.
Please proceed.
With that amendment, then, we would be required to keep the inspection records for five years. Is that correct?
Let me defer to the city attorney on Missouri Sunshine laws.
Yes, I believe that five years would be the record retention requirement on those, correct?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? We've got a motion and a second on the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seen none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on Councilmember Stewart's amendment.
Can we read...
You want to read it again?
One more time, and just, I want to make sure I understand which section of the code we're changing again.
Okay. Councilor, please proceed.
It's Section 4-15-006. We'd be striking anything currently in it, so the part one and part two.
A1 and 2?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay.
And then we'd be adding...
The other language that you provided, yeah.
Okay.
I don't need you to read that again. I just want to make sure I understood which.
Okay.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else other further discussions on this before we vote on the amendment? Okay. And Councilmember, you emailed all of us a copy of this amendment, right?
I believe the city manager did.
Okay. All right. I received it. Just want to make sure everybody else got a copy of it. Okay, very, very good. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the First Amendment.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the amendment proposed by Councilmember Stewart is approved, seven in favor, zero opposed. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
May I inquire of the city councillor?
Please.
Something I have been asked is, is it possible for the city to require landlords to rehome tenants if their building is found to be dangerous? Can you address that question?
Yes, Councilmember. There isn't any current authority for the city to have that requirement. In doing some research, I haven't found where that has been the case anywhere else in Missouri. So, at this point, I can say that there isn't a mechanism for us to make that a requirement. And so, it would be my recommendation that it not be included in the ordinance currently because I think we would have a difficult time enforcing it.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would like to add an amendment.
Okay.
I move to amend ordinance 25 dash 004 by keeping and modifying Section 4.11.001 subsection D to state landlord shall provide the lessee or tenant a copy of the Independence Landlord-Tenant Guide.
And if you could just expand upon that, what does it do for the tenants and the landlords? Oh, yeah, please, a second.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this would just allow the landlords to not, to, we have this online, so that it can be given online, but it can also be given as a paper copy. I think there's a lot of people who don't have smartphones or don't have computers, and I think this is an important addition.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion on Amendment Two?
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Is it, so, just to understand, Councilmember Wiley, you would not find it acceptable for the landlord to, as part of their tenant agreement, to direct them to the website so they could find that information?
I think that the landlord should have the option to do either.
Okay, thank you. So, your amendment would allow electronic or physical?
Yes. Yes.
Do we need to state that specifically in the, in your amendment? I'm looking for clarification from the city manager.
Can you read your amendment back one more time?
I move to amend ordinance 25 dash 004 by keeping and modifying Section 4 dot 11 dot 001 subsection D to state the landlord shall provide the lessee or tenant a copy of the Independence Landlord-Tenant Guide. So, we might have to modify that, then.
I think at this point, the more clear you could be, the better that would be for everyone.
So, Mr. Mayor, a friendly amendment?
Please.
Would be to add electronic or physical copy inside the amendment that Councilmember Wiley proposes.
Okay. So, you would state electronic or physical copy would suffice?
Correct. Thank you.
And could we have a second for the Amendment to Amendment Two?
Second.
Okay, so, we've got a motion and a second stating that, and we will, in fact, as Robert's rules would state, we would do the Amendment to the Amendment and then do Amendment Two. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Question, city manager?
Please proceed.
So, the proposal was, by staff, was to remove this section. I guess I'd like to hear why that was proposed and the ramifications of that. I understand what that would need to be, but why was it, why was it proposed to be removed? So...
Yeah, originally, the discussion was this information is largely available online right now, but, you know, the more conversations that we've had, understanding frontline of being a tenant, not everybody has access to a computer or a smartphone. So, that by necessity then would prohibit them from being able to access that information. So, the idea with this amendment then was trying to be as inclusive as possible to all individuals, regardless of what technology they may or may not have.
So, maybe a question for the city councillor. Whether amendment would read if approved, in total, would a landlord be able to provide a electronic copy? I mean, we're not requiring that they, that, right now, you have to have a receipt. In other words, so, you know, when I, if I give a tenant one of these, they sign a receipt. So, this is not going to require that any longer. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then we can just provide an electronic copy and no proof is required, so...
That's correct.
That's fine, then. I understand.
Okay. Anyone else other further discussions on the Amendment to the Amendment? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for the Amendment to the Amendment.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the Amendment to the Amendment Number Two passes seven in favor, zero against. This brings us to Amendment Two with the amended, amended Amendment Two. So, any further discussion on the amended Amendment Two? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And Amendment Number Two, as amended, passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Any further discussion on 25-004?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Council's aware that I've been working with staff on updating this ordinance for some time. I want to give a brief summary of how we got to this point and encourage the support of this ordinance to my colleagues. I looked back at correspondence, and it was almost a year ago, staff began working on potential upgrades to rental-ready ordinances for Independence. Remember that the rental-ready program was initiated in June of 2017 after passage by the council in late 2016. That means that this program is roughly eight years old and remains almost the same as when it was initially passed. The only substantive addition was to add a requirement for CO2 detectors. And remember, the goal of rental-ready is to make sure that our rental stock in Independence is safe. As staff worked on this, the potential changes, I met with a few landlords to understand their concerns and consider improvements. In addition, as a landlord myself, I've talked with my tenants and others about their experience with the program. And with this information, we began to meet to work toward a finalized ordinance. As we went through this process, there were situations in our community that resulted in the need for some additional analysis and review of the ordinance to address concerns. Primarily, this came from the experience of the tenants at Independence Towers and the tragic death of a young child at that facility. Staff identified because of that some potential additional changes to the landlord-tenant ordinance that the city has in place. The result of this work was presented to the council in a study session in November by Mr. Scannell. Following that, I held two listening sessions for anyone in the community to attend regarding what was proposed. These two sessions were well-attended regarding, and we received significant feedback regarding the proposed language of the code and made a number of additional changes to what is before you. As a council, we've continued to listen to people and made additional amendments even tonight. The ordinance before you makes substantive changes to both the landlord-tenant and the rental-ready sections of the city code. And here are some key changes. On the landlord-tenant code, creation of a deficient landlord section to address concerns of landlords who don't take care of their property, updated the complaint process and expanded the language regarding landlord retaliation, and also included language regarding false complaints to help protect landlords. On the rental-ready code, it includes the ability to connect utility service to the business license to make sure that all the landlords are licensed. And let me mention, I do know that there are concerns about this, but this will not go into effect until January of 2026 to give staff time to rewrite some of the programming for this. And I've also been assured that the city will work with incoming tenants so that they are not disenfranchised by this process. Tonight, with the amendments, we're going to keep the inspectors' records for five years, and we're going to have the inspectors send those to the city. For long-term tenants, we're extending the inspection period to four years so their lives aren't interrupted quite so often. And probably most importantly, we're significantly expanding the items being inspected to improve the housing stock in our city. On apartment complexes and facilities with more than four units, we're increasing the required number of inspections so that all the units will be inspected at least once every four years. Those are what I see as some of the highlights of the proposed changes. Now, let's talk briefly about what we're not changing, at least not yet. There's no proposed change to bring inspections in-house so that city staff would perform those inspections as some people would like. We have done, what we have done is ask staff to do some analysis on that, and they will report back to us at a study session. That was originally scheduled for February the 10th, but with the council's indulgence, I'm going to ask that that be changed to March 10th, study session, so I can attend in person. Reason being is I'll be with the scouts on the February 10th at Jeff City, and then I'll be representing the city at the American Public Power Association on the second study session in February. So, I'm asking that to be changed, although I will be online at both of those. So, while I'm not going to suggest that what you have before you is perfect, it does, I believe, address a number of the concerns and significantly improves these portions of the city code. There have been calls to pause the process, but I'm encouraging the council to move forward and pass this ordinance. If other changes are needed, we can always address any concerns that develop. This portion of the city code, like all portions, are always able to be amended as needs address arise. So, again, I'm encouraging my colleagues on the council to pass this in an effort to improve these ordinances at this time. I thank you on that, and do have one question for the city councillor, if I could.
Please proceed.
And that would be, is that, just to make sure I'm perfectly clear on this, Mr. Culver, there's no conflict of interest in me voting on this since I am a landlord. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir. There is no conflict because this would obviously apply to all rental properties, all landlords. The fact that if any, you or any other council members happen to own specific properties, that does not create a conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else other further discussion? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, thank you, Councilman Fears, for taking the lead, taking the charge on this for about a year to get us tweaked up and with good information and updated. I was on the council in 2016, 17, when we initially put this here. And I want to say, this process was very much smooth, very much level-headed, and the discussions were very much on point and professional. So, thank you. The last time we did this in 16, it wasn't that way. It was, it was pretty embarrassing, to be quite frank, with some of the landlords and people that came in here and the stuff that took place. So, I want to say thank you to everybody for keeping your cool, having great discussions, and getting work product done. May not always agree with everything here, but this is another step that we can keep working and massaging and bring back things when they need to be. So, Councilman Fears, thank you for that.
Anyone else other further discussion? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to also thank Councilmember Fears, but really, all the people who came to have discussions with us, we had landlords, we had inspectors, we had tenants, and everybody always feels like they had to give more than the other side. Compromise language like this never makes everybody happy, but it gets a little bit better each time. So, thank you for the input and wisdom that you gave to us. I second Councilmember Fears that we will take a look at this, and one of the things I'd like for us to put a pin in, Mr. City Manager, is that in one year, we will have a study session so that we can hear how it's working for residents and landlords as an opportunity for everybody to give us that input. I do want to make one question clear. I know Councilmember Fears talked about it, but I want to make sure that we have publicly stated that we will be looking at business license when someone comes in to turn their utilities on, when the resident comes in to get their utilities turned on. They will be able to turn their utilities on, and that will trigger us to connect back with the landlord to make sure that we have a business license. I just want to be sure nobody's going to be left in the cold because the license isn't up-to-date.
Right, yes. We'll be working with those folks living or renting in those properties.
Okay. So, it gives us a way to reinforce to the landlords that they have to be licensed, but we take care of our residents. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else other further discussions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So, there was a comment by Councilmember Fears that there might be a change to the amount of time. Do we not have any amendment for that?
That was included in your amendment.
No, no.
When you talked about the sunshine...
No, that was just for the inspectors.
Right.
To give, there's another part in here that states every two years. That was not included in my amendment.
Record retention, right?
Mine was just for the record retention.
Right, that's what I thought we were talking about.
That's all mine was for, was for the record retention. And right, I mean, for second, this part right here mentions every two years.
Which section?
Um...
Are you referring to existing landlords can go four years?
All rental dwelling units shall be inspected by a qualified rental housing inspector every two years, or upon change of a tenant, whichever occurs last, whichever occurs last.
Right, that, that's not the part that we were going, I thought you were talking about the retaining records of the inspections. So, the, what, what would happen in this case is, my understanding is, and Mr. City Manager, Mr. Scannell, so make him correct me if I'm wrong, is that if you have a tenant that, if the proper, if the, if the tenancy has changed in two-year timeframe, then that would require to be re-inspected during that timeframe. But if it's a long-term tenant, someone that's been there a long time, then they would just be inspected every four years for a long-term tenant.
just be inspected every four years for a long-term tenant.
All I know is that's what my, not what my amendment pertained to. The only thing mine pertained to was.
Right, I under, I understand your amendment, that's what.
I just want to make sure that if it's a long-term tenant, that it's every four years it has to be inspected.
Uh, 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 the City Manager, maybe they can say it better than I did.
Yes, yes, every four years. Yes, with, yes, sir.
And my understanding is, that's already written in the ordinance as it stated.
That, that's right.
And it wasn't amended in this discussion that we've had this evening.
No, the.
I just want to make that for a member of a clar, a matter of clarification.
No, the only, the only amendment that pertained to any kind of a timeline tonight was the, the one pertaining to the records retention, so that it now reads that we'll do it in accordance with Missouri sunshine law, which gives us, if for some reason the sunshine law were to be amended for a shorter or longer period of time, we're tied the state statute.
I think that the important part of, of that amendment is that those records are now held by the city instead of by the inspectors. So that's, that, to me, that's sort of the, that's the, the important part there to, that way we do, we have access to them, and if someone else wants to, to see them, they have access to them as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that? Anyone else have other for clarification purposes? Okay, Mr. City Manager, I sent you some questions earlier for Mr. Scannell, if I can. I don't know if you want to answer those, or Mr. Scannell does, I've just got four questions I want to run by you just for clarification. Thank you, Mr. Scannell. So while you're walking up here, I'll just give you the question. How does the program protect renters retaliation if they report unsafe conditions? Because I know that was an issue of concern with the folks in, uh, Independence Towers. So how, how does this help protect them, just for the clarification for everyone watching and listening?
So yeah, so with this amendment to the landlord-tenant code, it does add the provision where the landlord cannot retaliate against the tenant for making a, a complaint, and that, and that could, could look like the tenant or the landlord charging the tenant a fee because the city assessed that landlord a, a, a fee because something had to be inspected or fixed. Or it could also look like the landlord turns off utility service or reduces some type of service there, cancels the trash service or something like that. Those could be examples of retaliation by a landlord, and we added that into this amendment to protect the tenants.
And, and can you briefly just describe how that works on our behalf? So we get a, we get a notification that there's retaliation by a landlord, what's our steps, how, what's our process?
So the city would investigate that and come to a conclusion. If we do find that there, the city would write a ticket for municipal court and ultimately a municipal judge would decide what penalty to assess to that landlord.
Okay, and then the tenants are in fact informed, and we talked about that earlier, with the rights of the program by the, by the landlord and the process?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay, very good. And is there a process for renters to report unsafe conditions directly to us as a city? Because I know in the past, that was always a concern.
Yes, there is, and, and we've updated the complaint form so that it's, it's easier to, to use. We've made that available in more, more places. The ultimate goal is to be able to get that on the In Depth Now app so that tenants could make those complaints and submit those to the city via the In Depth Now app.
Okay, very good. And one last question, how are landlords held accountable for repeated non-compliance to the program?
Ultimately, the landlord needs that business license. And if there's a, if there's a unit or units that do not pass an, an inspection, they cannot get their business license or renew their, their business license. And if the landlord fails that, the city has the ability to write a ticket to go to municipal court, because the landlord is, is operating that, that rental unit not in compliance with city ordinances.
Okay, very, very good. Those are all the questions I had. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate that. Any further discussion on this item before we proceed to vote on it? Again, I, I agree with my colleagues, I want to thank Councilmember Fears for all the work that he did, and I know it was a long task and it took a tremendous amount of discussion with everyone. I just noticed the discussion, we had seating, wordsmithing some of the amendments, so imagine that over an entire year. So he had to go through that process and you got to watch it live. So, any further discussion before we wrap up? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, let's take the roll on twenty-four, excuse me, twenty-five zero zero four, as amended twice.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and twenty-five zero zero four, pass a seven in favor, zero opposed. And that takes us to first readings. Madam City Clerk? Please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero zero two, first reading, an ordinance approving the petition to establish the Blue Ridge Crossing East Community Improvement District, establishing the district and making findings and authorizing actions related to establishment of the district, first reading.
And if I can just make a point, this was the CID that we talked about earlier, we didn't vote on it tonight because the way the rules are written, we vote on it at the next council meeting. So just a heads up for everyone who had an interest in that. Madam City Clerk, please proceed. Okay, now we go to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
Uh, nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Fears?
Uh, just want to give a shout out to a couple of people relative to the, there was a Martin Luther King Day celebration yesterday. I want to recognize Lynn Baker, who's here with us tonight, who received an award there. And also, just for those who weren't able to be there, Virgil Garner, who's a chaplain with the Police Department, was the speaker at that event and did a, a great job at that, so just want to give a shout out to those two pe, two people.
Perfect, thank you very much. Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things tonight. I had a volunteer orientation at our animal shelter a couple weeks ago, and I'm going to start walking dogs at the animal shelter, and I want to encourage anyone who wants to volunteer, we need volunteers at the shelter. You don't, if you aren't comfortable walking a dog, you can do, there's other things you can do, make enrichment, do laundry, do dishes. So if you like animals and want to help the animals of Independence, it's a great way to spend some time. I also did a ride-along with, with firefighters from Station Three last week during the day, and I'm always really impressed with our first responders and had a, um, a good day with the firefighters, and, um, you know, you don't, you don't want to have firefighters show up at your house, and somehow they're able to really be a calming presence when they're called into a situation that's really difficult. And so it was a really good day. We have a new reporting system that I got to see, and I just want to thank the firefighters of Station Three. And then last week, I was always, I also got to go to Hope House and do a tour of Hope House and meet with Eileen Sheehan, and I had never been there. And I know the mayor spoke about this amazing place tonight, and we're, we're lucky to have that as a resource, and it, it was a good morning to, to learn about what, what we have in Independence to help people in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Vought?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Kansas City voters passed a general obligation bond in 2017 for capital improvements like sidewalks and streets and other infrastructure. And every now and again, my daughter gets nostalgic, and she likes to pull up the house that she was born and raised in, in Kansas City. And I was born and raised in a house, two houses down from where they were raised. And I believe that Kansas City has mostly completed their street projects at this point from 2017. And I just have a couple of pictures of before and afters of my street that I grew up on that was not, um, uh, the streets were busted up my whole time living there, growing up. So this is before, like, no curbs. That's what it looks like now, just the improvement is incredible. If you can see that tree, that's actually the house that my kids grew up in behind it, and mine was the blue one, which was not blue when I lived there. But the street, or the sidewalk is just so raised up, and everywhere there was a tree planted, it was that bad, and now it's beautiful. I mean, my daughter said, you can't even recognize the neighborhood, it looks totally different. So that's just an example of, as, you know, small improvement with streets and sidewalks and curbs that a GO bond could help. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things, I was very grateful that my colleagues let me skip the last study session so I could go represent the city at the inauguration. Got to see some of our local folks get recognized, including the new governor. It's important for cities to have good relationships with their state representatives because there's many things that we have to do in partnership, so thank you to my colleagues for that. I want to call out Coach Rodriguez from Van Horn, who has just crossed 200 career wins in soccer, which is monumental, and I was lucky enough to get to go and present them with a proclamation, and the students there were absolutely delightful. I cannot wait to watch them grow up and live in our city and make it a better place. I really do appreciate the city manager finding funds to put some additional dollars toward homeless housing in local motels. It is just so cold, no one can be outside. It also gives us the opportunity to meet folks where they are and see if they're interested in moving toward a more stable housing situation, so it's a twofold benefit. Tonight, we approved some additional funds for Truman Habitat. They do home projects, they help seniors stay in their homes by doing some small repairs. It's a big deal to invest in our housing stock, not just by our good landlords, but also by homeowners. And there are a lot of people who are older who just cannot afford to make those improvements, so we're delighted to be in partnership with Truman Habitat. And then we brought in four new police officers and one new dispatch person, and I appreciate all the support that we have given to our police officers. We keep chipping away, we do continue to have retirements, but I'll tell you that when I came into office, I looked at the 70 officers who were going to retire in a five-year period and could not imagine how we were going to replace them. And so while we continue to have retirements, we have been able to replace them on the front end, not just with new grads, but with some seasoned officers who have chosen to move into Independence, so that's in part due to the good leadership of our Chief Dustman, as well as the investment that our community is willing to make in our police. So I just want to say thank you for that, and we're seeing the fruits of those labors. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Ditto to everything my colleagues have said. I will add just one quick point to the importance of tomorrow, as tomorrow is the point-time count, which starts from 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning, that goes full 24 hours to 9:00 a.m. Tuesday, or Thursday morning. And that is the count for our homeless individuals, our unhoused individuals in the whole metro. And what that does is help provide funding. It's a federal mandate that we go out and count and that we work in the, the community. It's a full court press from all of our service, civics groups, social service groups, to get as much of an accurate count as we can for being in the weather that this is. So this is taking place, it's important to know that we do have individuals that are out in this stuff, and that we are all God's creation, and that we need to take that into account with dignity and respect. And also, I would say with the, the large amount of snow that we have had and the freezing weather that we have had lately, you may have noticed our sidewalks on major roads are not very walkable, so individuals are walking in the streets just to, so they can get from point A to point B, which should be a good reminder, and it kind of woke me up to the fact that how many pedestrians we actually have in this city that do walk or ride bikes from point A to point B all through this town? And when the sidewalks are unaccessible, it just really kind of highlights that, so please be respectful to those folks. They deserve all the dignity and respect as everyone else does, so that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I also would be amiss if I did not mention that our city manager gave the State of the City address just last week. Very good job. And it's also, you can watch it, is that correct? How could citizens who are watching tonight want to watch and see the State of the City address?
Yeah, go to our website and you can pull it up there. Now, we archive everything on our city's YouTube channel, and getting to our website will get you to the right place.
Very good. And is there, when you get certain clicks, anything go your way?
Uh, not, it hasn't made it to my mailbox yet.
Very good, just, just checking, you know? All right, with nothing else to be stated, this meeting is in fact adjourned. Thank you all.